Do you think this is the most attended? Or which is the...
This is pretty well attended.
Really? It just was a smaller space.
It was a smaller space, but it filled out definitely. But I don't know if this could wind up...
Holden must... Holden felt pretty... Well, I don't know. It's... It'd be really interesting. Like, I feel like this is the biggest crowd, so maybe it's because... Last one. I can't believe they have six.
It feels like the point of the family is supposed to be that they're...
No, I just know the Lake Washington, they have six AP... They have 100 AP students in AP Gov. Whereas at Juanita, it's two AP. And, and both, both, both the high schools are the same size for students. Population. It's just interesting to see how much more interested, I guess, students are in AP Gov or something. I'm not quite sure.
Alright, so I point out to everyone sitting right here, that's a hot mic, so if you don't want anything heard or seen on the internet, don't say it right here.
Okay.
Because that'll be, uh, out there probably forever.
Okay.
So, pretty much everyone, just like, these, these four guys right here, that's all it is.
So many, uh, questions here. In two hours. It's like seven and fifteen minutes of question. It's only like ten minutes, it's only like fifteen minutes, we can't... Probably like ten, yeah. It's a lot.
The students have asked me to tell all of you that if you have any problems with your microphones during the forum, the moderator knows what talk will come and adjust. Ready, how are you? I'm so ready, I'm excited.
Okay, I think we need to get this party started. There's people still tricking, trickling in, but, um, yeah. Let's do this, and respect the committee's time. Good evening and welcome to tonight's candidate forum for the four positions on Kirkland's City Council that are up for election on November 4th. My name is Susan Bosler. I am a member of the Seattle King County League of Women Voters, and I am joined by fellow League members, Tammy, Farina, Erin, and Marilyn. The League is a political organization, but we are nonpartisan, and we do not endorse candidates. The League's mission is empowering voters and defending democracy. And we have been engaged in that mission for over a hundred years. As an organization, we focus on providing voters with educational events and resources, and on registering new voters, and then encouraging them to vote. We welcome all genders from age sixteen to join us as members. Tonight's forum is dedicated to the candidates running for our city council. The decisions these local officials make will affect our daily lives as much, if not more, than those in the federal government. From road repairs, schools, and urban planning to emergency services and policing, local government is a constant presence in every part of American life. We thank everyone attending tonight for your interest in these critical local issues. Tonight, we have all eight candidates for Kirkland City Council present, and we thank them for their willingness to participate in this forum. The last one. We are trying something, we are trying something relatively new this evening. Our League unit decided to partner with the students here at Lake Washington High School. Under their teacher's guidance and the League's mentorship, these students will run the forum, uh, will run the forum this evening. They will serve as the forum moderators and the timekeepers. They have researched the issues. In conjunction with inputs submitted by community members, they have formulated the questions for our candidates tonight. We hope this will be the first step for these young people in being active participants in their democracy throughout their lives. Voters for life. We ask that both the audience and the candidates give these young people the same courtesy and respect that they would if members of the League were serving in these same roles. And we hope that all of you, like us, are excited to see what these young people have prepared for us tonight in this forum. For this event, the League has partnered with the Lake Washington PTSA Council. I'd like to introduce Brooke Galopzos, co-president of the Council, who will say a few words about the Council's work, and then we'll introduce our student moderators. Brooke.
Hi, good evening, I am Brooke Galopzos, I am the co-president of Lake Washington PTSA Council. The Washington State PTA affirms the importance of student civic engagement and student voice. And tonight's forum truly reflects that. Our moderators, Janine Contractor and Elias Ing, worked with fellow students from Lake Washington and Juanita High Schools to review community submitted questions and research key issues facing Kirkland. The questions you'll hear tonight come directly from that student-led process. Thank you to our students for their leadership, to the League of Women Voters for organizing this event, and to our candidates for being there to engage with the community. Now I'll turn it over to Janine Contractor to officially begin tonight's forum. Thank you.
Thank you so much to Susan and Brooke for the warm welcome. Before we dive into this evening's discussion, we want to acknowledge the League of Women Voters and the Lake Washington PTSA for making this event possible. We'd also like to thank every candidate for taking the time to attend our forum.
Now, let's take a moment to go over the structured ground rules of tonight's forum and what you can expect. I'm Elias, and I'll be moderating this event alongside Janine. We sent information concerning the forum's structure and ground rules to the candidates ahead of time, and they've agreed to abide by them. We'll start the evening with each candidate's opening statement, followed by a series of questions that we developed based on our own research and in conjunction with input from the community, discussions we had with Juanita High School and the League of Women Voters. They're through as many questions as possible, we decide to dispense with candidates' closing statements.
To ensure fairness, we did not provide the candidates with any of the questions ahead of time. The candidates also do not know the order in which we will ask them to respond, but we will ensure that candidates ready for the same position respond in tandem with one another. Before each question, we will specify how much time is allotted for each candidate to answer. To keep things on track, we have dedicated timekeepers who will get 15-second warnings as the time limit approaches. Once time is expired, a speaker may finish his or her sentence, then must stop.
This forum will be recorded and produced by the League and Lake Washington High School. No other recording of this forum is allowed. The recording of this forum may be shared only in its entirety and only with the permission of the League of Women Voters. At this time, we ask everyone to please silence their phones. So that we can get through as many questions as possible, we also ask the audience to hold their applause and to refrain from eyeing commentary until the forum concludes.
Now, let's move on to introducing the candidates. Running for position one, we have Jay Arnold and Ken Overman. Running for position three, we have Shilpa Pram and Katie Mallon. For position five, we have Ken McKenzie and Neil Black. And for position seven, we have Kurt Dressner and Jonathan Stowe.
Now, we'll begin with opening statements. Each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves as you would like. Position seven, John Pascal, you have one minute, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Hi, everyone, I'm John Pascal. Uh, thank you all for being here, this is an incredible turnout. Thank you to the students for putting this on, it's amazing to see. I've been raising my family here since 2001. I have two students that have gone through Lake Washington School District. Actually, one's at Juanita High School right now as a senior. And I run a small business here in Kirkland. I built my career as a state licensed civil engineer and transportation planner. And I've helped agencies across the state tackle their challenges related to transportation and land use. That experience I bring to council. Uh, my approach pushes on outcomes that make sense, things that are accountable, and things that truly serve our neighborhoods and businesses. I'm proud of the work that we've accomplished over the last eight years. There's more to do. Working for safe streets, housing affordability, growth that fits our community, infrastructure that keeps pace with housing, strong public safety, and continued investment in parks and open space. Above all, I'll keep listening to all of you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, position seven, Kurt Dressner, you have one minute.
Alright, good evening, everyone, I'm Kurt. Uh, I want to thank the League and the PTSA and the students for putting on the forum. Uh, I think it's great that this forum is moderated by students, uh, because it's more important than ever that young people are involved in our democracy. It's important for the usual reasons, you're the ones that have to live the longest with the decisions that get made. Uh, you're the ones that will see the worst effects of climate change. And you're the ones most likely to be priced out of your own hometown. But another reason that you're, is that you're much less beholden to status quo bias. In fact, you're biologically programmed to question the idea that something has to remain a certain way simply because that's how it is now. One reason I'm running is that I hear from so many residents about the challenges they're facing. And I recognize that those are the results, both intentional and unintentional, of choices we have made. As such, we can change them by making better choices. But the people we elect need to be willing to question the status quo, and they need to be able to imagine a better future for Kirkland, your future. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position five, Neil Black, you have one minute.
Uh, well, thank you all, I'm Neil Black, I've served on the council since 2019. Uh, when I'm not serving you, I'm a tech lawyer for entrepreneurs and startups. I've twice been a vice president and general counsel for a startup and a multi-billion dollar public company. I've been involved in community service through college, law school, and my legal career. Everything from coordinating a reading program for students learning English to interning at the White House, the Department of Justice, the Environmental Defense Fund. More recently, leading efforts to reduce gun violence, ensure equal access to justice, and expand hands-on science education. Over the years, I've been asked to serve on the board of three different nonprofit organizations and two for-profit companies. For 10 years, I coached Kirkland American Little League. My wife and I, as a married couple, have never lived anywhere but Kirkland, where we raised our kids. I've also taught law at Seattle U and University of Washington. I'm the first in my family to graduate from college. I hope you'll reelect me based on experience and dedication to public service. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position five, Ken McKenzie, you have one minute.
Thank you, this is a really, really good event. I have a stronger connection to this group than you probably think. My, uh, my kids are recent, from recent graduates. My son Gavin graduated from L-Dub in 2021, and my daughter from Ingleboro in 2023. I've been serving the Kirkland community since 2015. I've been working on my neighborhood association, appointed to a lot of city committees, and I've fought at the ballot box to keep our taxes under control. This is not your usual Kirkland election, it's really, really important. The choices are stark. The current council majority has passed a, a plan for massive growth and lots of urban density. Concrete everywhere. And I say no, it's time to choose a more moderate approach. Sensible growth with lots of transportation choices and better housing options. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position one, Ken Overman, you have one minute.
Alright, well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the League of Women Voters and Lake Washington High School. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm running for city council because we need a plan for our city that reflects our shared priorities. I've been talking with residents and businesses all over Kirkland, and in general, everybody loves a city, I mean, that's why we're all here tonight. But many are frustrated with the direction that we're headed. We're going to put 13,000 new housing units in our city. How are we going to ensure the housing is affordable? How are people going to be able to get around our city? Our 20-year comprehensive plan is too vague, too confusing, and advocates for much more growth than Washington State requires. I have decades of global experience working in Fortune 500 companies. My experience includes bringing people together to create plans, and then leading them to make those plans a reality. I look forward to your questions and sharing my ideas and qualifications, looking to Kirkland into the next decade, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next, position one, Jay Arnold, you have one minute.
Hi, everybody, I am Jay Arnold, proud father of two kings and one raven, and running for reelection to council position number one. Want to thank the League of Women Voters and Lake Washington PTSA for organizing tonight, but most importantly, for the students here that are running the forum and who are watching. My, your involvement is critical. My path here, um, involved getting involved in nonprofits and working on campaigns for issues I was passionate about and candidates that I believed in. And for the young people here today, you can make a real difference doing so. In fact, it's critical because the hard choices we make today are going to be responsible for your future tomorrow. So, as you are getting involved with this today, I encourage you to get involved, and also, for the seniors out there, do your research and vote. Uh, I'd like the, uh, League of Women Voters comment about being a forever voter. It starts now, especially in local elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position three, Katie Mallon, you have one minute.
Hi, thanks for having me here tonight. This is the forum I was most excited about. Uh, I will never forget the first election that I voted in. It was to elect Bill Clinton, and, um, that was super exciting, and I have been a committed voter and very engaged in politics, uh, since then. Um, I am also a proud parent of two kings. They, uh, happen to go here, go to, uh, Lake Washington right now. And, um, and, you know, I, some other folks have pointed out that there's a lot happening in Kirkland right now. And it's true, what happens at the local level will impact you more than anything else. And I decided to get involved and get engaged about six, seven years ago. And, um, and, uh, when they took away our community council at the state level because they did not like how our council was voting. And I always tell my children, uh, they never have anything good planned for you when they take your voice away.
Thank you. Next, position three, Shilpa Pram, you have one minute.
Hi, I'm Shilpa Pram, I'm running for Kirkland City Council, position number three. First, thank you so much for inviting me, uh, and this is awesome that the students are, are running this show, um, so thank you. My kids, who are fifth graders at Rose Hill Elementary School, just down the street, cornered this morning, and made me take a sacred oath not to embarrass them tonight at their future high school. So I'm gonna try not, not to do that. Why am I running? The answer is very simple. I care deeply about the kind of community we're building. I love this city and want to ensure Kirkland remains a vibrant and welcoming place for our kiddos, seniors, families, and everyone in between. It's really easy to complain about how unaffordable our housing has become or how bad our public transportation is, but it's hard to come up with solutions. I want to take on this task, bring a fresh perspective, technical skills, and some more cutting-edge current solutions. I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move on to our questions, we had a request from our media team for candidates. Do you please remember to speak directly into the mic and keep it close to your mouth? Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Now we'll move on to the Q and A portion of the forum. Permitted response time will vary with each question. We will announce the time allotted to answer prior to reading each question. We want to start the forum with a question that is close to home for us students. We continue to see speeding near our schools, and we are concerned about pedestrian and bike safety for students and families traveling to and from schools. Of the city's 17 school speed zones, only nine are equipped with flashing beacons, and only four have automated traffic safety cameras. Among the city's competing needs, do you think that filling this technology gap in school speed zones should be one of the city's priorities? If so, how do you plan to address the gap? If not, why not? Position three, Shilpa Pram, you have 45 seconds.
Yeah, if, if we don't have traffic, uh, traffic beams and traffic lights that are appropriate to ensure the safety of our students, that needs to be prioritized. If I'm on council, I would want to make sure to see the data behind what we're seeing. I would want to ask all the different high schools, the issues that they are facing, are being faced with, get that data in and make sure that we are investing in appropriate lights, um, appropriate sidewalks, and appropriate safeguards to ensure that our, that our kids are, are safe. That'll be a, a number one priority for, for me.
Thank you. Next, position three, Katie Mallon, you have 45 seconds.
I was super excited when the new sidewalk was installed coming up from, uh, 70th Street exit coming around the corner because, uh, being a parent here, you know that there's no school buses, and most, a lot of the kids are walking and riding bikes and driving in. And so, I would absolutely advocate for more around all of the schools, and to pay for that, I would look into a lot of the extenuous consulting projects that our city's currently doing. Um, we could save, uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars per V I M I that we could invest directly into safety around the schools. And, uh, I, it's very doable and very easy.
Thank you. Next, position one, Jay Arnold, you have 45 seconds.
Thank you. Well, safety near schools has been a priority for the council. That's what we have put in around safe routes to schools and some of the, um, uh, things like the speed limit cameras today. And we are taking a data-driven approach to say we want to deal with the worst areas first. But it is a priority to continue to spend it in, in those particular areas, uh, especially around crossings and traffic calming, um, starting with those and then going to things like automated enforcement. Part of what happens with this is the fines from automated enforcement go into funding new safety improvements. That's one thing to fund, and also just around, um, the community's license fees. And I think that's going to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position one, Ken Overman, you have 45 seconds.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I can't think of anything more important than our kids, our students, and their safety. Making sure we need to take a more holistic approach. Don't just look at the cars, or look at the sidewalk, or look at the buses. We have to look at everything and see what's working, what's not working, and put a priority to fix it, making sure the lighting is there, uh, that when you're walking, it's, it's, you don't have to worry if you're biking in. So, I advocate for making sure that we put a priority on our schools and the visibility around all the programs that make our kids safe.
Thank you. Next, position five, Ken McKenzie, you have 45 seconds.
Thank you. So I think that we start at the elementary and middle school level, and we look closely at the way that kids get to school. And sidewalks, safe crossings are, are key. And in middle school, safe biking is key. We have some pretty good, uh, green routes in, around, around town, but they don't go near middle schools. So we need to change the way that we, we build those bike and, and walking routes and put them closer to where middle schools are.
Thank you. Next, position five, Neil Black, you have 45 seconds.
Alright, well, thank you. Well, 45 seconds is not a lot of time to talk about something as important as pedestrian and bike safety, especially for our kids. But I do want to say that I am really proud to be on a council that, uh, took steps to adopt a Safe Routes to School Action Plan and identified 40 high-priority Safe Routes to School projects, and found the funding to accelerate the development of those projects by several years. Um, so we have 40 high-priority projects that are going to ensure that, um, that youth are able to walk and bike to school safely. I want to continue that work, um, continue prioritizing those type of projects, and continue rolling out our, um, our automated, uh, traffic cameras for school zones. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position seven, Kurt Dressner, you have 45 seconds.
Well, when we talk about changing driver behavior, there's really three, there are the three Es, right? You've got education, enforcement, and engineering. And of those, engineering is the only one that produces long-term fixes. The problem with engineering is it's very expensive. Uh, I was involved, uh, with, uh, a proposal to the Neighborhood Safety Program as my, in my role as vice chair of the Everest Association. I worked with the South Rose Hill Association to propose a project, in fact, right around that corner over there where folks who go to this school, including my kids, know people whip around that corner incredibly quickly. Um, I'm also a fan of using automated enforcement, uh, as a way to bridge the gap until you can raise the funds for those engineering improvements. The trick there is, is like Jay said, making sure that the... The trick there is, like Jay said, making sure that the revenues from automated enforcement go strictly toward the improvements that make it not needed anymore.
Thank you. Next, position seven, John Pascal. You have 45 seconds.
When I was first elected in 2017, I heard loud and clear from parents and students from across the city that they wanted safety to be improved around the schools, and that's what's led to the Safer Streets Action Plan. And from that, that identified a lot of improvements around our schools. But what I, the approach I take is kind of the Safer Systems approach, where you're looking holistically at all the different avenues to address safety. Automated enforcement cameras are one of those. I supported those around schools. We'll continue to look for those locations that make sense. One of the things that I did in my profession was help write the guidebook on automated safety cameras for Washington State, and that's used by communities across the state to locate cameras in the right locations. Thank you.
All right, thank you. In 2022, Kirkland adopted a five-year diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging program. The roadmap outlined goes across leadership, communication, policies, the workforce, and law. In recent months, we've seen considerable pushback to diversity, equity, inclusion programs around the country. Do you agree with Kirkland's roadmap? And if so, what further measures would you take to ensure these goals are fully realized in Kirkland? If you don't agree with the roadmap, why? Position one, Ken Olbermann. You have 45 seconds.
Thank you. I think equity means making local government accessible, and not just for adults but for students as well. So I support it. I mean, at the end of the day, the Kirkland Youth Council and the Kirkland Initiative gives students basically firsthand experience in civic leadership and policy discussions. So what we need to continue to do is use plain language communications, host meetings in schools, libraries, and parks, and youth voices can easily participate. Measure inclusion by who feels welcome, and we need to continue to push in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position one, Jay Arnold. You have 45 seconds.
Thank you. Well, council just recently reaffirmed our commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And so I think this is really important, especially in these times, to have strong leaders that are going to stand up as we see federal pushback on our rights. From the census, we know that sixty, only 69% of our community is white. We know 29% come from countries other than the U.S., and we need to make sure that the spaces that we're having these conversations are reflecting everybody. So that's why it's important to continue this work.
Thank you. Next, position five, Neil White. You have 45 seconds.
Well, thank you. So this is an area, I really appreciate this question, this is the area that I'm really proud of the work that the city of Kirkland has done, both as a community and as a council and as a staff. It was important to adopt the five-year DEIB roadmap. It was important to hire the city's first DEIB manager. The work that Erica does to make sure that our city is not just inclusive, because that's one thing, but being welcoming, true belonging and welcoming, that's most important. As we see the federal government step back, city of Kirkland is going to step forward.
Thank you. Next, position five, Kevin McKenzie. You have 45 seconds.
So the five-year roadmap was passed in July of 2022, and then the city was pretty good about tracking progress. There were 68 objectives in this roadmap, and as of 2023, 54% have been complete, 35% were in progress, 10% were pending. So there's pretty good progress. But in 2024, there was never any update on the website. When I looked this morning, the website says, "Update the council on roadmap link forthcoming." So what I'm sensing is that the council is kind of resting on their laurels, and they need some more energy on this. And I bring that energy, and we go back and revisit this roadmap and update it and get going on it again.
Thank you. Next, position seven, John Pascal. You have 45 seconds.
Thank you. So when I was first elected, one of the things that I was really proud of is the council passing the safe, inclusive, welcoming ordinance, and that was in 2017. Since then, we've continued our work, looking at ways to continue moving forward, and that was through the DEIB roadmap. And you've heard about that from some of the other candidates. We made considerable progress on that. That was very intentional, was focused work that we invested in. We've made, now we need to look at what are those remaining gaps? What are those remaining things that we need to do? Are there other things that have come up that we need to address? And so we need to continue this work, and I'll continue supporting this work as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position seven, Kurt Trusser. You have 45 seconds.
Well, as a father of LGBTQ youth, this is personal for me. It's one of the things that actually drives me to do all the work that I do, is trying to make sure that folks here in Kirkland feel like they belong, feel like they can be included, feel like there's a place for them. That's why even before running, I've already worked with the DEIB manager in the city on multiple events aimed at bringing folks in and getting folks to understand the history of our city, getting folks to understand the current status of our city, and getting folks to realize what they can do as individuals to make Kirkland more inviting and more equitable. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position three, Katie Mallon. You have 45 seconds.
So I feel like Kirkland's a pretty welcoming place, and that excites me, and I also appreciate and stand behind the city's policies around DEIB. And where I would expand it would be with the youth, because I think where we need to focus is equity and making sure that we're giving all kids opportunities. And I think oftentimes we wait until it's too late, and it's really hard for those kids to catch up. I think we need to focus when kids are younger and ensure that all of those kids are getting the same opportunities and educational opportunities to be successful as they pursue their dreams in life.
Thank you. Next, position three, Shilpa Pram. You have 45 seconds.
Yeah, so as a daughter of immigrants who migrated here in the 70s, I do still think that the DEIB initiatives are still very much needed in today's world, especially with the outlook of the federal government. And I think the way we do that is, you know, we continue with our plans, but also make sure that we're reaching out to cultural associations and reaching out to people that typically are not involved in city council, and making sure that they understand that the decisions that we are making on city council actually do impact their lives and motivate them to actually get involved in city council. And then I also think that we should keep the youth council live. I think continuously getting feedback from the youth on how they are feeling as well and making sure that their opinions are also part of the conversation are going to be critical next steps.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Several sources place the median cost of a home in Kirkland at $1.3 million or higher. We've heard from teachers at Kirkland High School that they cannot afford to live in the city where they teach and are forced to commute long distances. Someday, we might look to purchase homes in the city where we grew up, but these prices seem unrealistic for first-time homebuyers. What policies, if any, do you support that might ensure that lower and middle-income individuals, historically excluded residents, and first-time homebuyers aren't forced out of Kirkland? Position five, Ken McKenzie. You have one minute.
I think the place to attack the problem of homeownership at a cheaper level is with condominiums. That was the answer that I used when I was looking for a place to live in San Francisco. I'd sold my house in the Midwest and rattled around in various ways of living, and I decided I needed to buy something, and I bought a one-bedroom condo in downtown San Francisco. That gave me the entry back into the housing market. So I think that the city, working together with the state, needs to work hard to make condo living a successful way to get into the housing market. There's too many legal issues, there's too much risk, and we need to solve those problems so that people can buy that small piece of property, own it, build equity, and then move up from there.
Thank you. Next, position five, Neil White. You have one minute.
Well, thank you. So I agree with Ken. Condo liability is actually an important issue in the state of Washington. It is something that we need to work on. It's something that City Kirkland has been advocating for at the state level for reform on condo liability. That is what will help more condos to be built, which are smaller, more affordable homes that allow people to get into home ownership. It also can lead to more older apartments being converted into condos. That's how my mom was able to afford to move here and live here, was through an older apartment that converted. But we need to look bigger than that. We need to foster a greater mix of smaller, more affordable homes being built. Kirkland's entirely built out. The development we see is infill development. If we do nothing, that infill development is all larger, what we sometimes call McMansions. And so what we have to do is make intentional decisions that foster the construction of a greater mix of smaller homes, especially in our neighborhood centers that are walkable neighborhood centers for folks. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position seven, Kurt Trusser. You have one minute.
Definitely agree with the sentiment that we need more variety of sizes and prices of homes in our neighborhoods. My neighborhood, I couldn't afford to live in my own neighborhood today if I wanted to. It would be completely out of reach for me. The number of folks that I've talked to who feel like the bottom rungs of the housing ladder are just completely missing, they're just not there. There's nothing for folks to grab onto. And so we need to provide those rungs, and that comes through allowing more sizes and shapes of homes. There's no silver bullet for this, though. It's anybody who tells you we can fix it with this one thing, it's not telling you the truth. This is a yes-and type of situation, right? We're talking about shelter here. We're not talking about like luxury, we're not talking about, you know, fun. We're talking about putting a roof over people's heads, and we need to treat it seriously, and we need to come up with sincere solutions that take advantage of all the different approaches that we can use. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position seven, John Pascal. You have one minute.
Thank you. I think the thing that you'll find that we all have in common and probably everyone out there in the audience is that we all want affordable housing. I don't, that's not a controversial subject. It's all about how does that happen? For me, it's about supporting all housing options and types throughout the city, encouraging that, making sure if we're building too much of one thing, that we're focusing on another. The other thing that we do is, we want affordable housing, but we've had a record of layering more fees and regulations that actually prevent additional housing from being built. And you might think, well, that's, but that's not affordable. But that affects the cost of all housing and the building of housing, so it just increases housing costs overall. So I really think that we need to take a look at our regulations and our fees, make housing more affordable to build, and I agree with the condo liability. We want people to begin building equity. I did that. I want all our young generation to start doing that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position three, Shilpa Pram. You have one minute.
So I think there's two sides of the coin here. So for renters, when rents rise faster than wages, that's when people can't live here. And luckily, you know, the state didn't pass a 10% cap on rent increases, but the question is, how will that work? Will it house more people or not? Will it stifle development or not? These are things that I would want to evaluate as time continues to make sure that it's actually working, and if it's not, advocate for something that does work. And then for homebuyers, especially first-time or individuals that want to age in place, I mean, the reality is access is impossible right now. Rising home prices are limited, inventory is pushing people out. So I do support, you know, deferring property taxes on some homes, reducing the risk on condominium development, because that does still exist, zoning reforms that allow more townhomes, condos, which a lot of what the other folks have said here is really allowing more housing options across the board.
Thank you. Next, position three, Katie Mallon. You have one minute.
As John pointed out, a lot of the regulation and fees actually drive the lack of affordability. Anyone who's lived in San Francisco knows that rent control only drives up the cost of housing. My husband and I lived there for a period of time. We were in line trying to find a place to live. Somebody handed a $10,000 check to the person and said, "Here is, I would like you to consider my application." So I would, one of the regulations I would start with is a really lobby to strip away rent control in the state that we just passed. Also, the in-loo fees and regulation around the type of affordability which has prevented the development of the 85th Street station area and also condominiums is something I've spoken of quite a few times about limiting liability for builders to encourage them to build condominiums, because that has traditionally been the way the middle class has built wealth in this country.
Thank you. Next, position one, Jay Arnold. You have one minute.
To start with, it starts with a commitment to say, "We want a Kirkland that is affordable for teachers, for working families, for people at all ages and stages of life." And it's going to take multiple approaches. There's no one thing. First, we need more apartments, and that's going to be the more intense development that happens at Totem Lake, downtown, and along 85th, where we have the opportunity for development near transit. It's going to happen in our neighborhood shopping centers, where they need to be mixed-use for where we have housing and shops and services in the same place where that all supports each other. For people that live there, they have the services just right there, and for the grocery stores and the local restaurants, they have more customers. And then in our neighborhood, residential neighborhoods, we need to incentivize smaller homes, and I think that's the work that the council has been doing when you hear about missing middle housing. Kirkland was ahead of the curve on this, and because of that, complying with recent state laws around middle housing was a lot easier for Kirkland than it was in other cities.
Thank you. Next, position one, Ken Olbermann.
All right, thank you. I mean, this is really an important topic and hard to do in one minute, but, you know, I've got to say, as one of the candidates here, actually, my wife and I live in a condo. We actually live downtown. We moved from a house into there, and within our condo, we do have nurses, we do have folks who work and stock the shelves at QFC. So we are in the condo environment. We can see folks who are able to get in, so I'm also a big proponent that we need to slow down the apartments, let's do more condos. But to get the condos, you've got to help the developers, you've got to get rid of some of the fees, you've got to get rid of the regulations. The developers do apartments because it's easy, it's cheap for them to do it, and there's not as much regulation for them to do that going forward. So this is going to be a big one. The other one is, we do have a couple of good areas. If you look at Totem Lake, if you look off 85th, if you look in parts of Oneida, we can get these nice condo-type units, so those are the right environments to do that type of density. Thank you.
Thank you. Our beach parks are some of the most cherished gathering spaces for families and students who rely on recreation. Yet, these critical spaces are frequently closed due to recurrent bacterial contamination. In a recent summer season, King County showed multiple closures where eco-bodies surpassed the safety threshold. It appears that this contamination is often caused by arthlocks and Canada geese that visit the parks and underused by Kirkland's residents, impossible or unpleasant at best. What suggestions do you have to confront the source of this contamination and then mitigate the situation so we have full access to our beaches again? Position seven, John Pascal. You have 45 seconds.
Great question. We actually get this question a lot, particularly with the closed beaches during the summers. And, you know, we, I know that many of us have asked this question of our staff, and it's a complicated issue. It's not just the geese or the ducks, it's the circulation of the water in Lake Washington, particularly in like Oneida Beach area, the shallow water. It's also the runoff, and we've seen that from doing testing on some of our creeks. And so there's runoff issues, contamination around sewer pipelines that might be fractured or things like that. So there's a whole host of things. There's not one thing that we can do. And every... And every solution, because I've dug into this quite frequently, is super expensive. And that's why we haven't tackled it as best as we can. I think it's one thing at a time, though.
Thank you. Next, position seven, Kurt Dressner. You have 45 seconds.
Yeah, just to echo something that John said, it's not always the geese. I don't know if any of you have noticed the closure on the cross Kirkland corridor on the sort of southern part near 52nd. That literally was closed because they found a sewage leak there that was leaking into Lake Washington and causing the bacteria levels there to be really high. So the fact that we only just discovered that just really underscores what a complicated problem this is. But I'm absolutely dedicated to making sure that our public beaches are accessible as much as possible. I mean, it's one of the things that makes Kirkland really great, is our public waterfront. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position three, Katie Malik. You have 45 seconds.
So beyond what's already been studied, I think also we need to think about prevention. And one thing I would do is I would advocate for ensuring that all the runoff water testing is done on the Houghton Transfer Station before they're allowed to dig into that online landfill that has had lots of fun things thrown in there from the time that Carolyn Point was a shipyard during World War II. So I think not only is there mitigation of what's currently happening, but ensuring we don't continue to contaminate our water.
Thank you. Next, position three, Shilpa Pran. You have 45 seconds.
I would want to bring some fresh eyes into all of this. I'm a bioengineer undergrad, so I would want to bring some of my skills to that to really assess the types of tests we have done in the past and whether they are the best types of tests and the most cutting-edge tests. I would look at other cities to see what, with similar climates and water bodies, to see if they face similar issues, and if they do, figure out what tests they've done to see if there's a way we can prevent it here. But, you know, at the same time, if the solutions, as John mentioned, if they are very expensive, then we would need to assess whether it would make sense to fix it or not. And that would be something I would want to get community put on, on whether we should spend the money on it.
Thank you. Next, position one, Ken Overman. You have 45 seconds.
Thank you. Well, first of all, as an avid runner, I aim down by the lake all the time. And I do actually like seeing the ducks and the geese, even though I've got to run long and miss what's left behind by them. But it isn't just the ducks and the geese, and I agree with a lot of what was said, you know, between the runoffs and the different spillage. We need to identify exactly in each of the areas what's driving it and causing the E. coli and having to shut down the different beaches, because I think it's terrible. Especially at the peak of the summer, you can't access the water. So we need to go through it. We need to look at it logically and address it, and then tackle it one by one by one. And over time, we can definitely create a path that we will eliminate that problem. But it's something we have to commit to do, and we have to have the resources to be able to do it. And I'm committed.
Thank you. Next, position one, Jay Arnold. You have 45 seconds.
Thank you. And as has been said throughout the panel, this is not just a geese problem, nor is it a Kirkland-only problem. When we're talking about runoff, we're talking about two things. One is runoff from our streets. But for this particular problem, it's more likely runoff from our yards, where you're looking at what is the fertilizer that we're using, what is it that we're doing with our own pets in maintaining that, and how can we improve those sorts of things? So there's going to be a regional piece of it, because it's not all coming from Kirkland. The way that, as John had mentioned, the way that water goes through Lake Washington, we get impacted by other communities. So it's going to be projects like Certified Yard Smart Yards and other things that could look at what we're doing about runoff from our own property.
Thank you. Next, position five, Neil Black. You have 45 seconds.
All right, well, thank you. Well, I love that there's this question about our beach parks. Our beach parks are the jewels in Kirkland, and I think it's nice to discuss them in the sense that it really celebrates the vision of our prior councils to have those parks. I'm not going to be able to add a lot to what has already been said. It is a complex issue. It is wildlife. It is runoff, and that includes pets. It is aging infrastructure, and it is a lack of water flow along parts of our waterfront. So we need a continued commitment to monitoring. We need to continue investing in upgrading our aging infrastructure. And we're going to need to continue to do the public education related to the runoff, both from parks, from yards, and that. So that, I understand that this is a quality of life issue for Kirkland. It's important, because they are the jewels of Kirkland. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position five, Ken McKenzie. You have 45 seconds.
So the angle that I'd like for us all to consider is the impact of urbanization. As we pour more concrete, build more hard surfaces, including roofs, we dump more water into the storm cellar instead of into our creeks. So I think that it's time that we realize that the building, tall buildings and pouring concrete everywhere in Kirkland has an impact on our quality of life. So it's time to do less of it and have more yards, more trees, and more dirt so that the water flows into the creeks and into the lake.
Thank you. Many Kirkland residents value open skies, small-town character, and established neighborhood. Others prioritize denser, affordable, and diverse housing options, and would also like to see housing closer to transit routes. When the residential zoning code is revisited, which of these values will you prioritize, and how will you address these competing interests? Position seven, Kurt Dressner. You have 45 seconds.
Sure. So small-town feel is more than about short buildings. If short buildings made Kirkland Kirkland, there'd be a lot of Kirklands out there, and we know there aren't. That said, there's room for both of these things in our city. In our urban centers and our commercial centers, we have room for the type of living that these folks are talking about. I know my daughter, we got to Redmond, and she came out of the parking garage we're in, and she looked up and she thought, "Oh, my gosh, I want to live there over that bakery right there." That's for some people. For other people, that's not what they're interested in. And we can have cozy, quiet, serene neighborhoods as well, neighborhoods that have homes at different price points and different sizes. These things are not in conflict. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position seven, John Pascal. You have 45 seconds.
Well, I'm proud of the work that Kirkland's been doing for decades to plan this community thoughtfully. And the way that we've done this historically is that we focus growth in different areas of the city. We focus density in those areas that have the transit and the services and the other infrastructure, like our urban centers. That's where the density belongs. And then as we move away from those and into the neighborhoods, we get into more of the lower-density areas. We passed the middle housing regulations in 2020, and that has considerably increased the amount of buildable housing in our neighborhoods. We haven't seen that yet take place. We're seeing it, but there's still a lot of capacity. And we need to make sure we have the infrastructure to support that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position three, Shilpa Pran. You have 45 seconds.
I really think that we can get both. I think, and the way we do that is we grow thoughtfully. We need to focus, and I think it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, is really focusing growth in the urban center and the neighborhood centers. And I think I'm aligned with that completely. I also think that having a neighborhood feel with a combination of a lot of different housing types and housing options can be doable, and you can still make sure that the feel is a small neighborhood feel. I also think as part of that, and as part of our growth, we need to make sure that we're protecting our grooming spaces and our open spaces. So as we are approving permits, we need to make sure that we're evaluating for that and thinking through that. And finally, the design, design of buildings, design of apartments, design of homes. I think part of the permitting process, we really need to make sure that's being evaluated. Thank you.
Next, position three, Katie Malik. You have 45 seconds.
I think it's been demonstrated that we can have both the urban density and the small-town feel. When you look at the Totem Lake project, that's a great example of a way to do density. It's close to transit. It's really a model for how to do it. I know there's a lot of interest in the middle housing and infill into our neighborhoods. I think we need to take a balanced approach on that, because, you know, when we do up the infill, we do impact our water. There's runoff. We become a heat island with all of our hard surfaces. So that maintaining our neighborhoods will help ensure we don't become an even more extreme heat island than we are right now.
Thank you. Next, position one, Jay Arnold. You have 45 seconds.
Well, I concur that we can do both. And in fact, I think we have to do both on this. And in addition to what I had said previously about, you know, thinking about things from scale at Totem Lake to our neighborhood centers to our residential centers. But let's take a look at our neighborhood shopping centers. Oneida Village is a great example of where you've got both the housing with four- and five-story buildings, but also open public plazas and your favorite coffee shops and restaurants. And so it shows how you can do that when you're paying attention to good design and public benefits. And those details matter with the design of how that goes and integrate in the neighborhood. It's not just about building heights totally.
Thank you. Next, position one, Ken Overman. You have 45 seconds.
I love Kirkland. I love it because it's walkable. I love it because you've got diverse communities. I love it because you can go in and you can see the different characters of the neighborhoods. It's important that we keep the character of the neighborhoods and not build five, six, seven-story buildings across the board. They do belong, and I do agree with a lot of what I've heard from other candidates, there's areas where we can do density if we do it right. Put density where it belongs, put in the infrastructure that supports it, and put it close to areas where transportation can help move the people who live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position five, Ken McKenzie. You have 45 seconds.
So I'm firmly in the we can do both camp. And the additional thought that I think we need to be considering is, what about commercial space? When we look over the last few years and more recently, the last six months, we are wiping out large commercial areas. The Michaels store is about to get redeveloped into apartments and a small retail. We need big retail. We need grocery stores. We need Costco-type stores. Not very many, but we need some. So we need to provide that as well, and we need to provide it at reasonable rent. And you can't do that in large, tall buildings. So we need to keep our commercial space, and we need to...
Thank you. Next, position five, Neil Black. You have 45 seconds.
Well, I grew up in a really small town. And the important thing to know about a small town is it's not defined by its buildings. It's defined by its people. And when my wife and I moved here in 1998, like a lot of you, some of you who've lived here even longer, Kirkland has always been a complete community. It's been a community where the people who own businesses here, who are teachers here, who are nurses here, who are firefighters here, can afford to live here. And that's what defines a small town, is a complete community where everyone who's part of that community can live in that community. I'm really proud of what we did with the comp plan, because that's what we did. We concentrated future growth in our neighborhood centers, in walkable neighborhood centers with mixed use, and in our urban growth centers. And then what we did with our neighborhoods is try to foster a greater mix of smaller home types being constructed there instead of just the McMansions.
Thank you. Many Kirkland residents, oh, sorry. Given our city's rapid growth, do you see a need for additional school capital projects? If not, why not? And if so, how would you fund these projects? Do you see potential for state or federal partnerships in that funding? Position five, Neil Black. You have 45 seconds.
Well, schools and school capacity are an important issue. It's not what the city council does directly. So we partner with Lake Washington School District to make sure that we are providing schools for the young people and the families that are in Kirkland and that might be moving to Kirkland. I'm proud of our partnership with Lake Washington School District, our coordination with Lake Washington School District, including around future growth. So we are planning for future growth in neighborhood centers, and we are communicating with Lake Washington School District about what that might mean for capacity. So important question, important matter. And I'm proud of the level of cooperation and coordination that we have between the city and the school district, thanks.
Thank you. Next, position five, Ken McKenzie. You have 45 seconds.
Well, I'm really disappointed in the cooperation between the school district and the city council. You must be my opponent. If you look at Lakeview Elementary, for example, there was lots of space around Lakeview Elementary that had old houses that were redeveloped into tall buildings, condo-type things, and should have been set aside for school district property and to get people out of the annexed areas. But we never had that coordination between the school district and the city. The school district didn't know that that property could be redeveloped by the school district. So I'd like to improve that cooperation significantly.
Thank you. Next, position seven, John Pascal. You have 45 seconds.
Thank you. Before I was on council, I served on the Long-Term Facilities Task Force for Lake Washington High School, and we'd meet in this room. I mean, for Lake Washington School District. We'd meet in this room, and we'd talk about the facilities that were needed to support the growth, not just in Kirkland, but across the three cities here that comprise Lake Washington School District. And what we learned was that, you know, we had a serious challenge. You know, there was the need for more capacity for school space, but there wasn't the dollars that were needed. I'm proud that that task force that I was on led to the last bond measure that was passed here in Kirkland. And that's what built Oneida High School and some other schools. We haven't had a bond measure passed since then. Since then, we've been working with the school district to better coordinate on land use, population forecasts, and school facility needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position seven, Kurt Dressner. You have 45 seconds.
Am I the only one who knows that the school district is actually projecting that we are going to lose over 1,700 students by 2030? Our enrollment in our elementary schools is down. Yes, our high schools are crowded right now, but there is a big bubble coming through of decreased enrollment, and we're going to wind up losing teachers. We're going to wind up with empty classrooms. The problem here is not that our schools are going to be overcrowded. The problem is that they are going to be under-enrolled, and we're going to be losing the very teachers that we need. So, you know, whether that's because people with families can't afford to live here, or whether that's because the people with families who can afford to live here are all sending their kids to private schools, because if you can afford a $5 million home, you can also afford a private school. I don't know which one it is, but we should be dealing with the actual numbers and not just going with vibes. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position three, Katie Malik. You have 45 seconds.
So I love numbers, and I know that our birth rates are down in King County, and that's why enrollment in elementary schools is down. Also, as the president of the PTSA here at Lake Washington High School, I attend the broader school district meetings. And yes, the high school enrollment is up, and a lot of that is driven by families coming here because this school district is such a great school district. So I think what we can do is not necessarily infuse capital, but reallocate space for the specific needs of the population and really focus on getting the most out of the buildings that we currently have and the small footprint that the school district has as well.
Thank you. Next, position three, Shilpa Pran. You have 45 seconds.
Yeah, although, you know, the city council does not decide directly on capital investments for schools, I do think that city council can be a conduit for that information, just given that many times what families are suffering through or what they're seeing in schools are directly communicated to council. So I do think that we need to have a strong partnership with the... with the school district and the school board to be that conduit and provide that information, especially as it relates to any sort of capital investments. And I think being proactive before problems arise is really critical. You know, I think parents and PTSAs especially, I think being in close contact with PTSAs across the board as they are also very close to parents and teachers in knowing what the capital investments may, that may be needed. I think that's truly important as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position one, Ken Overman. You have forty-five seconds.
Thank you. Okay, I agree with a lot of what I've heard. We've been reading in all the papers about decreasing enrollment, decreasing birth rates. Has something done affect us? At the same time, we're talking about a lot of density increases within Kirkland. So there needs to be a very close relationship between the cities and the schools to understand exactly what the future looks like. Making sure that we're doing the appropriate planning and budgets if it's needed in the districts as we look for five, 10 years. Helped. I also believe that it's important that we look if we have facilities that are underperforming, meaning we don't have the levels of enrollment that we need. Can we optimize the buildings doing some other activities? School-type events? Just to kind of think of a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position one, Jay Arnold. You have forty-five seconds.
To support the schools, there's a number of things we can do. First, financially, personally, as elected officials supporting school bonds and levers. Secondly, forming partnerships where the city can do things with the school district or for the school district so that they're spending more money in the classroom versus other things. That's what our city-school-playful partnerships are all about. The others on their legislative agenda supporting what they need for funding their big three, their big five. Secondly, is coordination. That's why we have a regular coordination meeting between school board members and city council members. And I, we count on them to escalate things to the council. We have not heard anything yet from Katsberg, Pascal, or others that are on that committee. And finally, I agree with Kurt. We need to make Kirkland more affordable for working families to support schools.
Thank you. Do you agree that human-caused climate change is a defining issue of our time and will require action from all levels of government? If so, what will you do as part of the council to reduce harmful emissions in our city? If you do not agree, why? Position one, Jay Arnold. You have one minute.
How long do I have on this one? This is a particular passion of mine for climate. We really need to be doing stuff now for the future. And this comes down to housing, transportation, and energy policy. Housing and how we plan. Transportation and how we avoid car trips and support transit and biking. And then for the built environment itself, how do we have energy-efficient green buildings? This is something that I have worked on on council. This is something I'm working on regionally. This is some things that have to be solved at the state level. And when those are necessary, I've been working on that from a state perspective. Because the work, they call it global warming, but the solutions are all local. We've got to look at how we build the built environment, how we get more transit in Kirkland, how we connect all of our neighborhoods for more walking and biking, and how we use energy to make more and more things electric.
Thank you. Next, position one, Ken Overman. You have one minute.
Yeah, this is such a great question. I mean, there's so many things that we should be doing and we need to start now. One of them is looking at smart housing. As we do build these new homes, what can we do to help improve, to eliminate a lot of the emissions versus some of the older or less expensive type of homes that we've done? E-cars continues to be a good way to go, but we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure and electrical systems throughout our Kirkland to making sure that we can get our cars charged adequately because a lot of buildings, especially older buildings, don't have that capability today. So a lot of people who do want e-cars can't access them the way they should be. There's been tons of discussions about e-bikes. But ultimately, at the end of the day, and let me throw one more there. Being a technology background, if you even look at solar, the advances just in the last five years alone in this environment will be phenomenal to any home that puts it on there. So I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position five, Ken McKenzie. You have one minute.
So I'll focus on transit because I think that's an area where we have a huge need and we're not getting a good deal. We're not getting a good deal from Metro who continually cuts Kirkland's transit service. We all know the 255 is no longer a useful way to get to downtown. And that's a Metro decision. They just cut the 257, which was the same kind of service from Kings Gate down to Seattle. So the people that used to take those buses every day to get to work now have no choice. My daughter rode the transit bus from Kirkland up to Inglemore High School. And they took that route away. And they said, "Well, we're going to replace your 25-minute ride with an hour-and-a-half ride." That's not acceptable. So Kirkland has to negotiate strongly, more strongly, with Metro to get the kinds of transit service that we need.
Thank you. Next, position five, Neil Black. You have one minute.
Well, thank you. So I talk to a lot of young people in this role. And one of the things that I emphasize to them, when I was young, this is where I got my start in public service, was working on environmental issues, including at the White House and Environmental Defense Fund, and looking at these type of issues globally. But the work actually happens locally. Climate action, the climate resilience and climate action is being done by thousands and thousands of local council members working collaboratively. This is why it is so important that future growth be concentrated on our existing built environment. It strengthens small businesses, our schools and our hospitals, as already discussed, with a more reliable workforce. It reduces traffic congestion in and out of Kirkland, thereby reducing greenhouse gas emissions. It uses our existing infrastructure more effectively and efficiently. It reduces sprawl, so it protects farms, fields, and forests. It makes public transit more effective and efficient. Those are all reasons why the work that we do, concentrating future growth, even in a thoughtful way in our existing built environment, is so important. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position seven, Kurt Ressler. You have one minute.
I just want to pile on to what Neil said there. Land use is the best tool that cities have to address climate change. And it's a tool that cities are uniquely positioned to use as well. It's not only the best tool we have, it's also one of the best tools there is. You cannot be taken seriously as a climate change activist or a person who cares about climate change and not care about land use in cities because it's the best tool we have and we need to get serious about using it? There's nothing more to say than that.
Thank you. Next, position seven, John Pascal. You have one minute.
Thank you. So when you asked this question, the first thing that came to mind is just the good advocacy work of the students on the Sustainability Ambassadors, which are students from across Lake Washington High School. And I've seen their work. And they're very passionate about the environment and climate change. And those are things that we take seriously on the council and love to hear their good ideas. Some of those have been put into place into our sustainable, sustainability strategic plan that guides the work that we do as a city. It identifies the actions that we need to take. That's something that I was proud to support and we continue to follow. But it's looking at all the things that have been discussed, energy supply, buildings and infrastructure, the natural environment. That's one thing I just want to touch on a little bit. The natural environment is an important piece of climate change, right? Supporting our open spaces, making sure that we're restoring those and that we're continuing to invest in them as we continue to grow and densify.
Thank you. Next, position three, Choco Pram. You have one minute.
As global warming increases, we're really going to have to make sure we're using a multifaceted approach to deal with environmental issues. One is reducing car dependency, number one, and really making sure that we have more public transportation. If I'm on council, I will push for more frequent transit, short wait times, more stops, and expanding first mile and last mile connections to get people from point A to point B. I also think we really need to make sure we're protecting our green spaces, our tree canopies as we continue to grow, making sure that as part of our planning process and our permitting process, we're really making sure we're evaluating those factors. And prioritizing development that reduces sprawl, which a lot of folks have already mentioned. Promoting building in neighborhood centers and urban centers, I think achieves that and makes sure that we are not sprawling. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position three, Katie Malik. You have one minute.
So I was fortunate enough to be at the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce East Side Leadership Meeting. And one of the keynote speakers was one of the policy folks from Puget Sound Energy. And something I've mentioned in the past, we are sitting on a goldmine here in this state with geothermal energy. And what's preventing the production and development of that is the regulations at the state level. They've actually hamstrung Puget Sound Energy from moving forward with that. And they're hoping to get somewhere with that in 10 years. But what we really need to do is advocate at the state level to find ways to bring down barriers so that we can get true sustainable energy. If anyone's been to Iceland, you will know how effective and impressive it is. And in addition to that, I do agree with a lot of the things that folks have suggested up here, but that would be the most impactful thing we can do for our climate.
Thank you. How will you, as a council member, ensure that permanent supportive housing in Kirkland has both the services to support flights and regulations that maintain the neighborhood's safety? Position three, Katie Malik. You have one minute.
This is a great question for me. I supported the Department of Psychiatry at the University of Washington a couple of rolls ago. I work in healthcare and I understand the importance of wraparound services for folks who are struggling with mental health issues or addiction. Our current permanent supportive housing model does not provide the services that those folks need, nor are they placing them appropriately. We need to sort out the different needs that folks have. Is it mental illness? What kind of needs do they have? They may have higher acuity needs. And then those that start struggling with addiction. We need to require treatment and routine testing. Even primary care physicians require routine testing while they're caring for these patients. And it's a method and a methodology to get these folks back integrated into society and be productive members of society again.
Thank you. Next, position three, Choco Pram. You have one minute.
Permanent supportive housing is not just a compassionate thing to do, but it makes financial sense, which a lot of people don't realize. King County actually did a study and reported that based off of the implementation of permanent supportive housing, there were 17% less ER visits. There were 33% shorter hospital stays. So these are tax dollars saved. So it makes financial sense. In terms of protections and safety, I have seen that some PSH programs have implemented a code of conduct, a good neighbor agreement, 24/7, 365 oversight, a deal with the police department in making sure that there is a safety plan before a facility opens and that all residents follow a code of conduct. So these are things that I think are very important to ensure safety. But look, if those things don't work, if we are seeing other facilities where issues are coming up, these protections are not standstill. We can continuously evaluate and make changes if necessary.
Thank you. Next, position one, Ken Overman. You have one minute.
Great, thank you. Permanent supportive housing, I think, is important, but I agree with what I've earlier. One size does not fit everybody. We really need to look at this holistically, at the different needs of each of these different groups. So whether it's through mental illness, whether it's through down and out on your luck, whether it's, you know, women with children who need help, we need to provide different solutions for each one of these different categories and get these individuals the help they need to get them balanced, get them back on the street and up on their feet again. When it comes to affordable permanent supportive housing, you know, there is a lot going on. You can read in the papers every day what's happening over in Bellevue. And it's unfortunate situation. The code of conduct that's there isn't good enough. The type of police enforcement they're doing there isn't good enough. It went from five police calls in one year to about 100, and I can't remember exactly, 139. That's not acceptable. We have to relook at the process and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position one, Jay Arnold. You have one minute.
For permanent supportive housing, first, I want to make sure that people understand this is just housing. And this is an opportunity to take Kirklanders that are living in the shelter that's right next to the school, people that are living in tent city, people that are at safe parking, to say, "Here is permanent housing for you with those wraparound services." How do you make it sustainable? One of the key things that makes this work is that the county has a dedicated funding source from the state. And that's going to be really important to protect as we're looking at federal cuts moving forward. From all the other issues that were brought about around safety and security, first, we're requiring 24/7 staffing. We're talking about a code of conduct that applies not just for residents on site, but how they impact the neighborhood and making sure that there's not any disruptive behavior from that. There's a screening process. But as I've mentioned before, generally, we know these people because they're Kirklanders that are unsheltered today.
Thank you. Next, position five, Neil Black. You have one minute.
Well, thank you. So I won't recap what Deputy Mayor Arnold said about how sort of permanent supportive housing fits. Just suffice it to say that permanent supportive housing is a link in a continuous chain of programs that are necessary to get people from living rough and unsafe in parks and on streets into ultimately stable housing. We keep hearing from Sophia Way, which is the temporary shelter across the street, that this remains the weakest link in the chain of services necessary to move people into stable lives. What are we doing to make sure that permanent supportive housing in Kirkland is safe? We have the strictest code of conduct that any permanent supportive housing facility has. We have the neighborhood safety plan signed off on by our police department. We've invested in mobile integrated health and regional crisis responders in the best first response. And we support the organizations that provide human services. And we require background checks for anyone we know has a violent background. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position five, Ken McKenzie. You have one minute.
Wow. So much. Yes, this is a county program funded by our sales tax. It's not like magic state money. As it's currently structured, it's not safe for Kirklanders. The safety that is provided is provided by the Kirkland PD. So you and I are paying for, to provide safety for a county program. The people that are there are not required to get treatment for their issues. The people that are there are not required to get treatment for their issues. They're basically warehoused, and I think that's really unfair to them. They need treatment. They need help, and they're not required to get that help. So there are a number of improvements that need to be made to this to guarantee the safety of the community, to protect the high school and middle school that's right next door, and to provide a place where people could get the services that they need even though they're from Seattle.
Thank you. Next, position seven, John Pascal, you have one minute.
So like, I think every community, we all need to do our part to get residents back into stable housing, those that are unhoused. Now, permanent supportive housing is part of that, as you've heard. And when I think of this facility that we're, that King County's going to be opening here shortly, we want to make sure that that's safe for those residents on the inside and safe for those on the outside. For me, my focus is making this a success, making it work. And that's going to, that's going to require the work of the city of Kirkland, King County, and Plymouth as the operator. And we need to hold each other accountable. If any one of those three entities doesn't do its part, that facility could easily fail. So we need to hold each other accountable. King County is the owner, Plymouth is the operator, and Kirkland is going to be a partner in making sure that that's a success, and I'm committed to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position seven, Kurt Prisner, you have one minute.
All right, well, going last, all the good stuff's already been said, but I will echo a little bit of it. We have adopted the strictest code of conduct in King County. We do have a safety plan that's been approved by our police department. I think it's reasonable for folks to be a little worried. I think it's reasonable to worry about safety. Safety's important. For our neighborhoods to be safe, though, folks need somewhere to go. They can't just be hanging out on our sidewalks and in our parks. It's not safe for them. It's not safe for us. So I am a big fan of this project, actually. Like, I really am looking forward to seeing some of the folks that are currently living across the street finding permanent housing, a home, an apartment that happens to have wraparound services and happens to be subsidized in some cases. And I want to echo one other thing that I heard, which is that the work, the work of government in general is ongoing, and the work of this is also ongoing. And as we learn and as we, you know, move down this path, we will adjust and we will improve, the same way that we adjust and improve everything else.
With growing traffic on key corridors like Northeast 85th Street, Wantita Drive, and 100th Street, what's your plan to reduce congestion while keeping streets safe for pedestrians and cyclists? Position three, Katie Malik, you have one minute.
So prior to COVID, we had comprehensive bus routes in Kirkland. We lost a lot of those, and then the reallocation of bus routes was based on level, I believe it was per capita level of income, which is why Kirkland has not gotten the same level of metro bus service back. We need to advocate for our community to get those, to get those buses back. And, you know, when you, when you pour more cars onto the road, people just get more frustrated, and you see more and more accidents happening, and people, pedestrians getting hit, bike riders getting hit. We need to find a way to relieve the pressure of our streets, and the key to that is getting more buses back into our community so people have options and they're not forced to drive their cars.
Thank you. Next, position three, Cholpo Prem, you have one minute.
Part of reducing congestion is definitely more public transportation. That goes without saying. But in addition, we have an intelligent transportation system, or smart lights, only placed on 85th Street. And those lights, the smart lights, are eight years old. Since, in the past eight years, there has been a significant increase in the number of AI tools and AI infrastructure that has been built across the country that we don't have. And I think it is important for us to look into that. For an example, in Pittsburgh, they actually evaluated an AI tool on 47 intersections. Vehicle wait times were reduced by 40%, and also emissions were dropped by 20% to 21%. There are a number of other tools like this across the country that I do think we need to evaluate and implement in Kirkland. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position one, Ken Overman, you have one minute.
Did I tell you it took me almost 30 minutes to drive two miles to get here tonight? If you want to talk about frustration. I mean, it's one of the things that we definitely need to look at. It's becoming worse. We're talking about doing a lot more density and bringing people in, which brings in more cars, which is going to make it, again, worse. So what do we need to do? We need to look at all these major bottleneck areas to see if we can do any infrastructure changes to help alleviate some of these issues that we have today. I agree with what Katie says. You know, we, right by the transit center in Moss Bay, I can tell you the bus is pretty much empty. I mean, they're empty. So let's look and relook at the routes where we need the buses to move people, to get them, so it helps all of us a little bit more each day where we don't have to get frustration while we sit in traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position one, Jay Arnold, you have one minute.
Well, Ken, your anecdotes don't match reality, because I was on the bus this morning heading into Seattle, so, and it was a full bus. We need more transit service to provide alternatives. And we've talked about some of the challenges with metro providing service. And one of the things that council funded is a study on identifying the gaps in transit and envisioning transit service that we need. I think the city needs to start getting involved in providing transit to supplement what metro's providing. Bellevue's been doing a circulator shuttle, and I think that is a really interesting idea to be able to connect all of our neighborhoods. Around other investments and flow, we're seeing the finishing of some major transportation projects around Kirkland. And I think as we look at the next round of projects, we're seeing roundabouts really improving flow and looking to see where we can put those in, more complete streets. And then I like some of the ideas that Cholpo's talking about, and what can we do to leverage the new technology.
Thank you. Next, position five, Neil Black, you have one minute.
Thank you. So I would take a three-pronged approach to this. There's other programs and initiatives, but I think at the top, a stack rank of priorities. Number one is we have to give people more options for how to get around. So that includes cars, but it also includes transit. It also includes bikes and pedestrians. And when it comes to bikes and pedestrians, it's making sure that people can get around walking and biking and rolling safely. We also can solve this problem by having more people working where they live and living where they work, in walkable neighborhood centers, where people can get to a lot of their services quite near their homes. And the other thing we need to do is foster a community where transit, it makes sense. And part of that is having people to ride the transit. But it's also making sure the transit is speedy and reliable, and that we have the infrastructure to ensure that it's speedy and reliable, and also safe and clean.
Thank you. Next, position five, Ken McKenzie, you have one minute.
I think it's critically important that we locate major development in sensible places. For example, we know that the intersection of 116th and 1098th, but, you know, where Michaels is, is a traffic problem for Kirkland. And yet, we're on the verge of approving a zoning change to build a 75-foot-tall building at that intersection and have a lot more people living there. So we have to be wiser about where we put development. We can't just scatter it out all over the city. It has to be near travel corridors that can support the sort of residence and density that we're talking about. And related to that is good street design. There are definitely ways to build intersections that will improve traffic flow, and we should take advantage of those.
Thank you. Next, position seven, John Pascal, you have one minute.
Well, thank you. As a, as a transportation engineer, I get to address these issues for communities across the state, and Kirkland is not unique in congestion and transportation challenges all around. My focus has always been on a multimodal approach, so we're always looking at the needs of all modes. So if you want to drive a vehicle, you can drive a vehicle safely. If you want to get on a bike, you can ride a bike safely, and there's facilities there. If you want to walk, there's a sidewalk or a pathway for you. If you want to ride the bus, there's a bus nearby that provides service to somewhere, to a destination that you need to go. And we need to think about it holistically. There's no one answer. That's my focus. I'm really proud of the work that I've accomplished on council-led, the Wantita Drive corridor project, 100th Avenue, some major corridor projects that are looking at complete streets projects, looking at all types of modes, and really looking for the future and supporting the residents of Kirkland. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position seven, Kurt Prisner, you have one minute.
The only solution to car traffic is viable alternatives to driving. It's the only one. We have to provide people with other options. That way, for the folks who have to drive or the folks who really want to drive, there'll be fewer people in their way. 50% of people in a survey from the city said that they are interested but concerned when it comes to riding a bike around for transportation. I spoke to one of them last night when I was knocking doors in Wantita, a guy who picked where he was going to live because he wanted to be able to ride his bike. But he's terrified to ride down Northeast 124th Street because it's terrifying. There's not even a painted bike lane on that road. It's, on my way there, I saw a guy actually hit by, on a bike hit by a car at the intersection of Forbes Creek and Market. We have to do better. If we make it safe for people to walk, if we make it feasible for people to walk and bike by either putting them closer to where they want to go and/or improving the infrastructure, people will do those things, and it will help with our congestion. Thanks.
Thank you. What specific steps would you take to improve community engagement and communication, especially with young residents, and to create more accessible spaces in events where Kirkland residents of all ages can connect? This will be our last question. Position three, Cholpo Prem, you have 45 seconds.
I think two-way communication and in-person communication is unbeatable. You know, I think having communications through just public comment or email or a webinar is not adequate. I think the most impressive and meaningful conversations that I've had is honestly knocking on doors and talking to voters and understanding what their concerns are face-to-face. So I will implement many scenarios where we are able to do that on council, whether that be coffee meets, coming to where you are, having more public meetings, in-person meetings, so that concerns can be addressed. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position three, Katie Malik, you have 45 seconds.
As your elected representative, it's my duty to be your servant, and I, it's really about taking in information from your constituents, from the residents, from the business owners. We have 13 neighborhoods, and they're split up into neighborhood associations. And currently, our neighborhood associations are being minimized. And what I would do is I would really work to bolster those neighborhood associations so that we can bring the residents together and the businesses together so that they can provide meaningful feedback, and also use that as a mechanism for transparency in our local government to ensure our residents know what we're doing, what we're planning, and what we're going to be doing, engaging with you in your neighborhoods.
Thank you. Next, position one, Jay Arnold, you have 45 seconds.
Thank you. First, we need to meet people where they are, and this is going beyond the traditional meetings, which is the absolute worst way to talk about really tough issues. The best way is face-to-face, informally, and we're looking for ways to do that. If folks were at the homelessness town halls, and when you think about town halls, you think about a big room like this, and you're, people talking, it was really more individual table conversations, and that was really useful. So we want to do more of that. For people that can't be in a particular place in time, we've got to look at what are opportunities to make sure information's out there online and expand social media that the city is doing. And we do a little more each year to make sure we're getting the networks where people are, especially young people.
Thank you. Next, position one, Ken Overman, you have 45 seconds.
Thank you. What a great question. Here are the shareholders. The council reports to the shareholders. The dividends should be going to you, all the residents, the students, in the form of communications, in the form of visibility, being at events, coming to the schools, working with the students, talking to the communities. And I totally agree with the other comments. Neighborhood associations are key. There's almost 100,000 people now in Kirkland. We're not a small community anymore. And you need these communities to help us all come together to drive the communication so all that communication can roll back up again. I commit that you will see a very strong communication commitment from my side to you, the residents, the shareholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, position five, Ken McKenzie, you have 45 seconds.
I sense a ton of frustration when it comes with, comes to communicating with city hall. I see this in my neighborhood association where people feel like, well, there's really no point in showing up and talking about what's on your mind because they're not going to pay any attention anyway. And when you go to things like the homelessness roundtable, the meeting was completely stacked with people that agreed with the city hall view, so that other people couldn't get their ideas expressed. We need a city hall that understands that this is a two-way street, that you have to listen, that you have to understand, and that you have to admit that maybe you got it wrong and it's time to take a different direction. I listen.
Thank you. Next, position five, Neil Black, you have 45 seconds.
Well, what I really enjoyed about this forum is the number of times that the students have asked questions, and they are things that matter to the community, and they're things we're working on. And I, whether it was transportation, or affordability, or public safety, or this, community engagement, I understand folks' frustration. I'm actually really proud of the work that we're doing. The answer is multiple channels of communication and intentionality. So we're doing coffees with the council. We have, we created the Kirkland Initiative. We're in the process of upgrading the experience for the council webpage. We created a podcast. We created a newsletter that goes to everyone's mailboxes. We are working multiple channels, multiple strategies, trying to outreach. We can always do better. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position seven, Kurt Prisner, you have 45 seconds.
Yeah, I think you really do have to meet people where they are. I think the first step is to work on building representative groups that really represent a cross-section of our community, engaging with those groups earlier in decision-making processes and in an ongoing way. I also am really excited about the city's foray into providing stipends or childcare to folks who otherwise wouldn't be able to participate in those sorts of forums, along with hybrid attendance for folks who have issues actually getting to an in-person event. These are all ways that we can expand who gets to participate, and we should be not only taking these steps, but also monitoring our progress and seeing, like, how well are we doing? Do we need to step up some of these efforts? So I'm, I think all of those things are critical to getting an actual improvement in our community engagement. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, position seven, John Pascal, you have 45 seconds.
I mean, the basic thing is every resident should understand how their input helps shape policy, and that's really done through transparency at all levels. And the way that I think about it is when there is a process or there is something that people are communicating about, they need to understand who participated, what they said, and how those ideas influenced that final outcome. And when it comes to youth, we, I'm really interested in what youth thinks, and some of the ways that we do that are the youth council, participating on that, youth on our boards and commissions, that's why we have that. But one of the things that I think that we do miss is really tailoring our outreach to help the youth communicate these days. You don't communicate like we do, us adults, and so we need to be thinking about that in everything that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last question for the candidates tonight. Thank you all for being here and for your thoughtful participation in this forum. We want to give a big thank you to our candidates for their time and their willingness to engage in such an important discussion. Please give them a big round of applause.
Now, to help us wrap up this event, I'd like to hand it over to Tammy Conrad from the League of Women Voters who will handle our closing remarks.
Thank you. On behalf of the League, I'd like to thank both the candidates and everyone here tonight for participating. We'd also like to thank our partner, the Washington PTSD Council. The League of Women Voters encourages all voters to be informed concerning both the candidates candidates and the issues on the ballot. We hope that you're interested in learning even more about each of these candidates and their positions. An excellent place to find additional nonpartisan voting information is at vote411.org, a website created by the League and devoted to voter education. The League of Women Voters was formed 100 years ago when women were fighting for the right to vote. It was a hard-won battle. Protection of the right to vote continues to be critically important today. Please exercise your right, make your voices heard, and vote. Before we leave tonight, there's one more very important task we have. We need to recognize the amazing students from Lake Washington High School who made this forum happen. There were a lot of students behind the scenes who researched issues, who drafted questions, helped publicize the forum, served as our timekeepers, ran the audio, visual, and streaming equipment, and did so much more. In addition, students from Juanita High School provided input on the topics and the questions tonight. Here's what I can tell you. If these students are representative of the young and soon-to-be voters in this country, then our democracy is in excellent hands going forward. I'd like to thank all the students who were involved in this forum and their teachers to stand up and be recognized by the candidates and the audience for your hard work and excellent job. This was an amazing experience for the League to work with all of you. We appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Please drive safe and good night.